Jim Anderson, Senator Prater Force, and Commissioner Hoffman to pledge the flag.
Pledge the flag. Dear heaven and father, we thank you for this opportunity today to do the work in the city of Port St. John. We ask that you lead us and guide us throughout the new year, that you bless this community moving forward, and that we do everything in your name. Do you stand with prayer? Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll call a meeting to order. Thank you all for being here. Welcome back. Good to see everybody again. And before we go to the consent agenda, I've asked Sarah Heinz from the Health Department and her crew to come forward and give us a little update on where we are with vaccines and positivity rate and so forth. Sarah, it's all yours. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you ladies for coming.
And thank you for having me again. Again, my name is Sarah Corrata, and I am the health officer for the Florida Department of Health in Gulf and Franklin. And I have here with me two very important people. This is Brittany Beauchamp. She's our APRN. She's our provider for the Health Department. And I also have Jesse Pippen, who is our Public Information Officer and Operations Manager for the Florida Department of Health in Gulf. So just to recap real quick, because we're going to be in and out, this has certainly been quite the public health journey for all of us. We started with a new virus, understanding the symptoms, infection period, the most at-risk developing complications, isolation and quarantine diets for positive individuals in their close contacts, the ability to test with the slow results coming back in the beginning. Do you remember that? Holly, you remember those days? Okay, and now quicker test results back with the same prevention messages we've been sharing basically the entire year of 2020, and now the vaccine. So it's been quite the year for us. And for our counties in Gulf and Franklin, you know, their entire public health team has been committed 100% through this pandemic. And we really, you know, we really care about our communities and our people. Even when they're frustrated and they're yelling at us, we know it's been a stressful time for everyone, and we're all in this together. And I'm standing with some of the most impressive public health employees in the country. So proud of them and what we've been able to get through. And, you know, it's just been really challenging, and we continue to focus on ensuring that our most vulnerable populations are protected. And that's continuing into this next phase. So the vaccine has arrived, the Moderna vaccine in our communities, and medical practices that are COVID-19 registered providers in a system called Florida SHOTS are able to administer the vaccine. So for Gulf, that means the Health Department and a few other entities, North Florida Medical Center, PanCare, and Ascension Hospital, previously known as Sacred Heart. Right? Okay, good. So we're starting with the first round of vaccines to provide for frontline healthcare staff, workers, and folks 65 years and up. And right now, with our current staffing capacity, it's more efficient for us at this current time, the Health Department, to schedule vaccines by appointment in our clinic. So we have the capacity to administer between, what, up to?
Eighty-plus vaccines.
Right now, we're looking at at least about eighty a day. Eighty a day. So because, you know, our staff, we're still testing patients for active COVID-19. We're still calling positive cases back, and we're still doing contact tracing investigations, and we are still trying to provide our other routine public health services. So we appreciate everyone's patience. Anyone who wants to get a COVID-19 vaccine falls into the priority population in alignment with the governor's order will have that opportunity. That is our goal. So, you know, we want to please ensure that people are continuing to follow CDC guidance as you wait for your appointment slot, and the other providers that will be receiving the vaccine when they begin to ramp up their vaccination efforts. So we're trying to coordinate this partnership with the other entities. Some of them just aren't quite ready yet, so we're getting ramped up. So that being said, you know, the influx of calls, if you didn't already know, overwhelmed our phone system, causing lost calls and really long wait times. So simply put, you know, our hand-handled counties and the phone systems that are used by the Department of Health couldn't handle the demand. So thinking fast, thanks to Pippen, you know, my team developed a different method to ensure that those who fall within the priority populations have an opportunity to be on a pre-registered list. So there's a link being shared. Oh, there you go. I can do that. I make sure that they get one. Okay. So there's a link that's being shared across the community. And today, we're passing out that link with QR codes, and it brings up the same link. So the link is legit. So you don't have to call us to ask us if this link is legit, because you're creating a bottleneck in our phone system as it is. It's a legit link. And if you don't know how to use a QR code, because I was one of those people too, it's way easier than you think. You just pull up your camera and your smartphone, and you just look over that QR code, and like you're about to take a picture, and the link will just pop up. You just click on that link, and you can fill out the information. If you want to try it, it works. Okay.
That is our tech.
Nice. Okay, so this week, you know, our schedule is packed, and we are continuing to receive more vaccines. So we're going to go through that pre-registration list to continue scheduling our patients. So once you hear that we, you know, we have a full day or a full week, I mean, still go ahead, fill out that link, and put yourself on the list, and you will be contacted. Again, this is the Moderna vaccination, which does require that two-shot series. So once you get that first shot, you do leave our office with an appointment for the second shot. So we've got you covered there.
Question on that, Sarah. When you get your first shot and then reschedule it for 28 days, is the appointment time the same time as that time? Or are you gonna, do you know or will hear when that particular time on that day is?
We give you the time and the date whenever you leave. So it may not be the exact same time that you came in for your first one, but whenever you leave the office after your vaccine, you'll have a date and a time on your card.
Okay, very good. And also, you feel pretty comfortable with the supply as far as down the road? You know, feel pretty comfortable we're going to continue getting small batches at a time to cover the folks that got the first shots to get the second shots?
That's our understanding of this, yes.
Okay, okay. Question, anybody?
Only one question. I probably haven't. I got emailed you back this morning, but someone registered today, yesterday. About how long do you think? How far out are you guys?
For us to call them back?
Or for them to get a vaccine?
So that's a great question, and I've gotten that a lot. So I can tell you that our waitlist is pretty extensive. As you can imagine, with this number of people who have called and now able to use our registration link. The good news is, is that even though our waitlist is continuously growing, we have a group of people who are continuously calling down our waitlist to get those people scheduled. So with that in mind, we can always schedule however many Brittany tells me we have in vaccines. So as those vaccines come in, I can't give you a time. Two reasons. I don't know what number in your, you know, let's say you have a person, and if their number is 500, we'll probably be calling them pretty quickly this week, maybe next week. However, if they're in the, you know, if they're closer to 900, it might be the next shipment and not two shipments out before we can call them back.
That's going to depend too, because as we have a no-show for an appointment in the clinic. So this morning, we had two no-shows. Immediately, we're going either to the next day's vaccine list to pull somebody if they can come, or to that waitlist to pull somebody as quickly as they can. So we're continuously working that minute by minute.
So we have all hands on deck right now for this effort. And I can't believe.
But as providers, more providers are offering this vaccine as well, and as those people come on to the team and start vaccinating, that will also decrease that wait. Like depending on.
Some of those people, if that's their primary care provider in their primary care home, they'll fall off of our list and start going to their facility.
One of the questions I think me and Commissioner Lowery talked about was about vaccines coming here. Are they on for Gulf County residents? Can show an ID, or can somebody else come in to get one here, or we go to Bay County?
Okay, so. The vaccine is a federal vaccine, so we can't turn anyone away. However, we are looking at some sort of prioritized structure so that we are ensuring that our residents, particularly the most vulnerable, are able to get that vaccine, if that helps. Okay.
Well, we have a lot of folks too that work in Bay County.
Yeah, that's true.
And the question is, okay, we tried here, we're on the waitlist, can I go over to Bay County?
Oh, I think. And the answer is yes, they can go anywhere to get the vaccine.
Margaret?
Yes, question. Whether the physical data, you know, stack in for prioritizing to be on the best. The teacher.
So the, we're giving vaccine based on the governor's executive order. So the first executive order was for healthcare providers, for long-term care facility residents, and for any resident over the age of 65, or any person over the age of 65. That's been on the first executive order. Whenever he issues his next executive order, he'll specify which population group we go to next. So we're waiting from that, for that order from the state to come in to tell us when and who we can start giving to next. So that's based off of the state.
So the physical data, they were not included in this way?
Well, unless they were, you know, 65 and older and qualified. We did send that link out to Jim to make sure that he could message us.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Just trying to think what else. Oh, and the long-term care facilities that Brittany just mentioned. I just saw a post from Shelley King, who's the director. And they're administering the vaccines today at Crossshores.
Fantastic. That's a lot of stuff. My business is dealing with nearly challenged adults and people that work around them. They're not considered as, is Gulf House or a house like that considered a long-term care? Or does it have to be a CNA, the nurses, the people that?
Okay. It would be, as far as the Gulf House being a long-term care, it's not registered as a long-term care facility. So as far as someone like CVS or Walgreens who has a contract with the state to come in and do those vaccines, that would not be. Now, as far as your people who are caring for those, if they are frontline healthcare personnel, then yes, they could be considered healthcare personnel if they're actively taking care of health packs, CNAs, medical assistance, those sort of people who are actively taking care of individual lung diseases. So we can coordinate you after this meeting and set something up.
Okay. Any other questions? I can tell you, I had my shot yesterday, and they were very efficient, very professional, and it hurt a bit.
And you're still here?
No soreness today, no side effect, everything was good. Really and truly, it's less painful than a flu shot if it wasn't for me anymore. Thank you, folks, for what you do, and appreciate your coming.
Absolutely, well, we appreciate your interest, so thank you.
All right.
Thanks a lot, appreciate it. All right, guys, let's go to the consent agenda, which is a regular meeting of 12:15 of 2020. And it's a very long meeting, but quite a few minutes. Everybody has a chance to look over those, and if so, I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
Go move.
Motion by Commissioner Ashbrook, they're second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lowery. Any discussion? Anyone? Call in favor of I, I, O, same sign, motion passed five and O. All right, and the city attorney.
Yes, Mayor. There's a few things on the agenda today. As you guys are aware, the first, you gave me several assignments to do. The first one being draft an ordinance that a candidate could qualify by petition as opposed to a qualifying fee. You put a 10% of the registered voters, is what you guys asked for, and you wanted it to be effective as of August 1st, 2021. I did draft that. You should have a copy of that. And also, you also wanted me to look into drafting an ordinance that changed the election from May to November. There was a couple of questions that I had from Mr. Hanlon on that, and I called him yesterday. And in speaking on that, he asked me to hold up on that because there was some information that he wanted to get. I was always on it personally. He was the one that was really kind of pushing for this. And then when I talked to him, he kind of backed the way he wanted. And he asked me to kind of put it up. He was going to give me some information regarding that I would need to see before I draft it. So I told him that I would. That's basically, also, in looking in as far as the ordinance 579 and the petition, the signatures are verified obviously by the supervisor of the elections office, and it's 10 cents a signature, and it's paid by the candidate. So it would be basically this last time around, last last month, 2,600 registered voters, it would be basically $26. I have the signature verified. I don't, he asked me to kind of hold off, not delay, but the other ordinance he asked me to draft was ordinance 580, and that was basically the ordinance requesting a referendum placed on the ballot to increase the terms of commissioners from two to four years. That's also here. I did do that. That, we were going to not necessarily pass right away. We were just going to kind of hold it until we determine whether during the next election there was a contested election or not. It's not a part of the way for me to handle. So as far as these election ordinance are going, you know, me and Mr. Hanlon spoke yesterday, and he asked me to kind of just hold off on them just a little bit. He wanted to give me some information, so.
Even on 579, the beast?
Yeah, basically, on all of it. Since it's not going to affect until August 1st of this year, I told him that wouldn't be a problem.
Do you have any idea what he's?
It's in terms of deadlines and how it's going to affect if we have a runoff election, and maybe I might need to go back into the charter and look, because in the charter, you have runoff, it has to be seeded. The commissioner has to be seeded by June. If the elections are made, and we have all these extra people running, everybody's a person this time, it may cause a runoff, and that runoff may push it later on. He was going to study that and see if there's any other little tweaks that we need to make. That's fine, if you give me the stuff as quickly as you can.
Everybody understand that? Okay, we'll just tape on that too. Next meeting, hopefully, we put this to bed and.
At least the one ordinance, and then we're just holding back on the other one. See if there's a contest.
Mr. Hanlon can tell us which way we need to go.
And he's going to enlighten me about the moving the license from May to November. I, like I said, I was always on the person that was seeing him. I was going to see that when I talked to him, and I was going to back off. He's going to let me know why.
And the issue that he told me, Mayor, on that was it may put some situations, like people out in Windmark don't necessarily vote in a county-wide election. They have a supervisor elections office, and they wouldn't have city ballots out there. But they can print ballots on demand now in all of their polling places. So he's trying to figure out the logistics of that.
The other ordinance is dealing with the penalties for not paying your fee to launch your vote at the Frank Bay Park Bowl Round. I have drafted a preliminary one, which you guys had it last. I asked that you give a little bit more time to put the round. I have, there's a couple of things that concern me in terms of verbiage. I have calls into the league and city council, and over the holidays, he was out of the office. I didn't get a hold of him. I expected to talk to him the next day or so. The final, like, just particular things I'm a little bit nervous about, and I want to make sure all i's are dotted, all the t's are dotted. Also, you voted to have me go ahead and begin the process of setting up the account with the clerk's office, which is underway. Really not that big of a deal. That should be ready to go. So for the next meeting, this ordinance should be ready to go. We'll have the clerk's office all lined up and ready to go. We should be able to enforce this penalty, which is $150, which I was told by you guys at the last meeting.
On the parking ordinance, it will vote for the penalty?
For $150.
Okay. All right, I just didn't see it in the minutes, and I thought that should be in there, Jim.
We did vote.
Under parking ordinance update in the minutes, says the past five and O, but it didn't say we set the amount of the penalty.
I have it in my notes as $150.
Okay. But I'd like that to be reflected. I guess I did catch that.
I didn't catch that either when I read it.
So we need to make sure we add that, and the spirits gets that documented. So we have something to go back on after.
Do we need to amend that motion in second for the minutes?
I believe it was in the motion. It's definitely going to be followed up in the ordinance. So at this point, I think it's relevant, to be honest with you. We definitely can reflect in the minutes even if you didn't vote at this point on, because your ordinance is going to have.
I have it, I have it in my notes.
Your ordinance.
Driving and recording what is, of course, it's just not in front of us.
And it'd be, when you vote on your ordinance in there, that's where your, that's going to be the piece of paper that's going to laugh at that time.
Yep, okay. All right. Anything else, Mr. Hanlon?
That's all I have, unless anybody has any questions.
Anybody? Okay. All right, Jim, old business.
Yes, sir. Sarah and her staff has talked to us earlier about COVID on there. We definitely had our bite with the city staff. We're asking everybody to be safe to contain, hook these vaccines, to flow down, and get this thing under control. Anything else anybody want to come up with?
Right, right. Well, I certainly want you to let everybody know that I did know how many city employees we have out because of our contact tracing, because I'm kicking myself really for not promoting a little more that our city employees be required to wear a mask at all times. And now we're down to the skeleton staff and because of that. So we've got, I think, Kevin out at the wastewater plant, the Charlotte's out. John's got, how many, John? How many you have out?
I don't know.
Huh?
John with COVID.
Contact tracing? Okay, okay.
We got several out.
Okay. You've got two out.
With John's down, John's down by 540 per day.
We, I meant to ask Sarah what our positivity rate was. She told me yesterday, the last two weeks, it's like 19%. So that's about three times what it was.
We're going to run right to the courthouse, kind of face back. Now there's no any person hearing, kind of open it up.
Yeah, yeah. So, so, with that being said, I certainly like to throw it out, plus again, that we bring back our city requirement to, it's not enforceable. Governor won't let, and we never did enforce it. But it worked. You know, the merchants required people to come in their business, wear masks and so forth. So we're in a critical time right now, I think, and I certainly like a little discussion on how folks feel about bringing that requirement back. And I don't think we would have to do anything but both bring it back, because it's already written, yes, we're still in a state of emergency. So what do you guys think? Think we're over the hump, or we're starting to climb? Anybody?
Mayor, I'm only, and I'm not going to say it's a concern, it's just a comment. As people start getting these vaccines, we're mandating people to wear masks that ages of 65 and older, you know, may have the breathing issues and things. And now that they've got the vaccines, are we going to tell them that they have to wear a mask? I don't know.
I think we, from the get-go, we relied on the CDC and following their guidelines, and they still recommend social distancing, avoiding large crowds, wearing a mask. It's not, it's not us, it's, we're just relying on the experts. So, and two, if we, Health Park is giving A-vaccines a day, and PanCare, federal group, and We will Hitchcock, and the hospital, if we could possibly luckily end up giving 200 shots a day, five days a week, that's 1,000 a week, it'd take us 14 weeks to shoot everybody in the county. Basically 14, 15,000 in the county. Now, everybody's not going to get a shot. A lot of people, you know, we're lucky if we get 60%. I hope we do. But if things keep rolling along like they are, we can get, we can get, if we can promote it and get folks to do the right thing, we can knock this thing out in our county anyway, protect our people. So I'm hoping very much that if that thing keeps getting ramped up, folks will get the shot.
And the one thing I've heard that's, I hate to hear, is a lot of people are not going to get the shot.
Yeah.
But I've heard. I'm going to get it the first time I can get it.
Sure.
Don't want to be ahead of anybody that's, you know, but I'm definitely getting it.
Yeah, and if, I mean, if we can just promote that to our friends and try to, you know, pass time and pat them on the shoulder a little bit, so you know, it's not that big a deal. You really ought to get it for yourself and your family and your friends. I think it's important for us to maybe kind of spread the word that it's how important it is. But then again, and I don't want to impose on anybody, teach it's on, you know. I know, it's, we had, I feel separate. One out of five where I work didn't get it, not planning to get it, scared of it, so.
Well, the goal, I think, Mayor, is to prevent deaths. And if we can get our at-risk population vaccinated, I would support mandating masks until the point that they enter in the next phase where they start offering it to other people. As long as our death rate goes down, the increase in COVID doesn't really concern me as much, as long as there's no repercussions to getting it. So I would say I'd be fine with it until this over 65 phase of the dispersment is over.
And our hospital has not been overwhelmed, knock on wood, like you see on television. These places are really, there's some places that really hurting in this country as far as hospitals trying to take care of heart attacks and different areas. Not COVID, they don't have the staff. Sarah told me, of course, yesterday, and all the publicity on TV about we're not giving the shots fast enough. Well, there's, these clinics don't have enough staff. They can give it, give it efficiently, but they give a lot more if they have more staff. And so.
And availability, Mayor. I heard the first time they offered it was 24 hours, they ran out.
They did?
And they had to wait for another shipment.
They did. They got, had 400, they just got 400 more. PanCare got 300. I don't, I think we always got 400. So we need to, I hope they get it ramped up, and it's all promoted, so we can get back in all the light business. I'm tired of that. All right. That's my soapbox for the day. Any more old business, Jim?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's go to the new.
At the last meeting, we did have a great discussion about the Washington here complex, about a provision potentially to replace the old tennis court. It has been removed, thanks to John's staff, it's been cleared and ready for something new. We've had discussion about trying to put some kind of kidney provision slash area we're famous and gather have been, we've looked at company dropping on there, a 24-by-60 building. Had a comparison of what size we think would be appropriate. You're looking somewhere less than $10,000 for a facility of that type. Still, we have to put some concrete in place, you know, underneath it. Probably looking around $15,000 to make a nice facility. So it's out there for us for discussion today to see how the world moves.
But the 24-by-60 is that based on what we think is sufficient? Or based on how much room is there for both?
You have a very large area, so I don't think you're, I don't think you're limited by size to put a very large facility there. What we were looking at was, Larry had put a new one, a new pole barn out at the water treatment plant, so we had the blueprint for that and the cost on there. Based on those costs on there, you were looking at roughly around $4,000 to $5,000 for the kit, about that much for somebody to do the install work, and then about $4,000 to $5,000 for concrete. So if you felt that size was appropriate, we feel we can go for around $15,000. That would be for the bike kit, to have it installed and put concrete in.
We're also going to need picnic tables and electrical and all that stuff.
That's all kind of things we need to think about.
Well, I'd like to also think about the idea of maybe a cook station attached to the pole barn. And if we're going to do it, I think we need to look at doing that at the same time. At least pour the concrete, have water and power to an area that would be connected by concrete, but wouldn't be right there on top of people at the picnic tables. You would have a cook station where you could set up your grills, fry station, whatever you wanted. But I think just to put the pole barn there is just part of what I think would, it would be useful. But I think just to put the pole barn there is just part of what I think would, it would be used for.
Yeah, I, um, I feel the same way, Commissioner Hoffman. As far as, um, when we're going to decide to put it at, um, I think it should be put there, where the tennis courts would be. Talking about how it go, how, how people going to get there, but just have, um, um, hook the chain and then drive back there. You know, because it's, it's the best, best position, um, at the park, you know, you've got the basketball game right here, you've got the Washington Gym on the other side. You've got the softball field around, you know, the clean line is just behind. I think that's, that's the best spot for it, you know, because there's nothing necessary surrounding that area.
I, we've been fighting that for years about, you know, people driving in the park and everything. I mean, my suggestion would be extend that parking lot on that side where the chain is to the back, to right there, to the back of the gym. Because that's where everybody drives to, they drive to like the back of the gym and stop. So just make it, I mean, you ain't got to pave it, but make it gravel and rope it off there so you can get back to the park there. Because if you park up there in that front parking lot, you're still two hundred yards away from the park.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I think, uh, once we get, we vote on the, vote on the pavilion location, I think probably all agree where the location is, and all these other things just fall into place once it's there, uh, we can, we can tack all that on. I don't know if, uh, Commissioner Hoffman will want to get clear on what you were talking about. Uh, we talking about a separate, kind of attached, but covered. So the pavilion would be a hundred percent open for picnic tables and covers and that type of thing.
Yeah, exactly.
And the cook thing be like an add-on.
Or... Yeah, the, what I've been to setups where they put them all together, and you got kids running around hot grills. You know, if you have a fish fryer there, you got kids running around hot grease. And I've always liked, and I went to one, I can't remember what county it was, but they had a big pole barn with, with, uh, picnic tables, electricity, fans, and then separate, they had, and it was attached by walkway. They had the cooking area. And it was easy to corral kids and keep them out of that cook area. And that's where the men and women would be flipping hamburgers, frying fish or whatever, then you bring the food to the, to the other area. That.
Would it, would it be big enough that, uh, the twenty-four by sixty, would it be big enough to designate, let's say fifteen feet, and have like a bar across there, the cook area behind there? And then they cook, bring the food up here, people right here, just play like this room is it. And back here's the cook area, and all that's the picnic area out there.
This is probably about the size, Mayor.
I, I know, that's, that's what I'm thinking. This is a pretty, pretty big building.
I think that would work.
So, so let, let's, if y'all want to vote on the, let, uh, moving forward on the, on the price and so forth, the location. Put it up and then we can tweak it.
Once we get it up, we can always go up and look at, you know, y'all can determine, okay, we want this many picnic tables, and this is where we want a grill from, and whatever name you want.
How much money do we currently have, if any, in the department? I guess it'd be rec department, parks and rec, what is available currently to do?
I don't, I didn't bring, I forgot to bring my budget, but I believe I remember correctly, it was about sixty thousand dollars or forty-nine thousand dollars that we had for Washington Gym in the budget.
Okay.
Okay. So, uh, and did we not vote last, last meeting to do?
No, sir, we just, Commissioner Langton, I believe, just brought it up for, you know, to be thinking about what we want to do. So we kind of got some ideas of what we can do based on previous structures we've purchased. So we wanted to give some feedback to y'all if you don't like the idea, if you don't like the size, if we can move forward.
And we don't have to bid it out because all these things are separate.
As long as it's under check out, exactly.
That's correct.
Right, right. Okay, I'll entertain a question for the, uh, picnic pavilion on the old tennis courts in the Washington Gym area. A, uh, twenty-four by sixty pavilion, uh, in the neighborhood of, all total with concrete and construction, fifteen thousand dollars.
And that's, I want to be clear, that's not putting this on the city's back to put it together, right?
No, sir, the plan is at this point is to price it out both ways, for all the one package from some of these companies. At first, we buy a package and have a contract.
Okay.
I'll second.
I'll second. Now I've got more discussion, Jim just brought it up. He said, reach out to all these groups about a one package deal. If we do that, we got to put it out to bid.
Not if it's less than ten thousand.
Right. So you're, you're saying the, the pavilion itself, standalone by itself, is less than ten thousand?
If you put it together, we saw some for twenty-four by sixty. Now, if you add the concrete, that's where it's going to put you above it. So more likely what we're looking at is two different ways of, of, some of these places are put together, the pole barn, some will put it together and put the kit.
Yep.
And then you also have, you can buy some of these places, you can just buy the kit and then you can have a contract.
Over your contract.
And that's the direction I think we're going to go on that, because I did, and I may not share them, you know, that did get applies from a, um, a place. Uh, to do that turnkey, one shop, and it was, you know, a lot more. So it was definitely be more economic.
As long as we sub it out, I mean, we're going to be under a bid threshold every night.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, that's the main thing I wanted to know. All right, any more discussion? All fair eye, I have the same sign most past five, but I think that'll be a great low maintenance, highly used, great facility. So there's a question.
Yeah, just, uh, it's okay, we're going to try to go out for a grant also to have some public chairs, or even buy and go out for a grant, just in our group part. Because of the fact that, you know, when we get rid of used stuff, it's already in public places, it's privately owned, we need to have our own stuff.
Sure.
What you, for that right there, we would like to put in a grant, try to put in for some chairs and things, our, ourselves. Because when it comes down to a public place and you can't use the stuff that's in there, we need to have some stuff for us.
Right, and hopefully we'll have enough picnic table area, enough seating without having to drag chairs out for you. But anyway, okay, Jim, let's move on to, uh, basketball court.
Yes, sir, that's how, uh, the name of the outside basketball court at Peters Park, Commissioner Asprey, we talked to you today about.
Yes, sir. Um, with University of Florida being around town, getting everybody's stories, I, I found quite a few of them to be extremely interesting. And I talked with Amos Pittman quite a bit about his basketball life at, at Peters, at Washington Gym. Um, really struck me as he's never really been recognized for his skills. And I'd like to get permission to possibly put up a little wood plaque or something that just names the courts after him. You know, I hate offering up things posthumously, and he was getting up there. And so I'd like to recognize him while he can still be there to enjoy it. Just wanted some discussion, find out what everybody thought.
Discussion, anybody?
What, um, what I know about him is he's, um, he's a great, great basketball player, you know, and, um, um, you know, some people may not like him, but you can't take away the accolades that he has because of that. And, um, I think it's good to, um, give somebody the flowers while he's still good. And, um, as far as naming the, the court, I, I support it. I don't know how it's going to be done or anything like that, but, um, it's a good idea.
Oh. When, when you start naming something for somebody, it, it gets real, gets real tricky. Gets real tricky because, because I, I'm sure, uh, if you look back in the history of the Washington Gym and all the basketball players, Emile Klein has been, he was a coach out there, uh, for all those years, and all those championships and so forth. Uh, and then, y'all know better than me, you probably come up with a dozen names uh, that somebody would like to name that for, in their basketball prowess. Uh, I mean, it's fine to name somebody, but I think, uh, it does open a can of worms of, of. We got Frank Faye Park, the man, what he did to the city. You got Benny Roberts and all the ball fields because he was instrumental in, in that facility. You got, you're going to have Bill Kennedy coming up for, for twenty years of downtown redevelopment. And downtown, um, he died young, but, but there's, there's a movement and, uh, a foot to, to name something, uh, like the Promenade or something like that for, for Bill because he worked on it so hard. I can see the appropriateness of that. Uh, and, and of course, you get in trouble like I'm getting right now just by, by saying, saying something. It's not necessarily against somebody, but you, you got to think about ramifications of, of, of what you're doing by naming something. Uh, and how it's going to affect other people, how they feel. So come, come up Chester, please.
I, I just want to briefly, I was around during those times just a little bit. And, uh, the coach at that time was Coach Jones. He was out, he pretty much did the coaching, uh, and several months prior.
Yep.
But Coach Jones was, I think it'd be a good idea if you could say the teams that was under Coach Jones led by. That way you can cover pretty much, uh, probably, I think it was about eight years that they had a, a terrific time. And they played everywhere under Coach Jones. So they had some team, and it can be those teams led by, you know, Amos Pittman, which was the highest, highest scorer at that time.
Right.
Because you had some of the other ones, Lisan, uh, Leslie, uh, you had, um, Joe, um, Foxworth. They had quite a few of them that's, you know, in and out of the team. So I think if you could kind of like put them in a ball, under.
That's a good point.
That way you can kind of.
Does it also show the kids that are, go out there to play, some of the history of what's at risk in, in that area? That's not a bad idea with you.
And it was a team that wins the game, not a player.
Right. And so I just.
Well, you, I mean, I like the way you said, uh, led by so-and-so, and you might even put the name of the leading scorer each of those years.
Right.
Or something. I mean, I, I, I think that would, uh.
And so Amo, Amos was the, probably the primary player of the three years that he was, he led out there.
Yep.
Uh, but you also had the other team that followed after them, because they really had a successful time under Coach Jones.
Right, okay, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a couple ideas.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I, I think there's a lot of people in our community that have done things either in sports or politics or leadership roles that deserve something named after them. But what you get into, and I think just in the last five minutes, we've got a little brief taste of, of what you can get into. And that's when you try to label everything in the city by someone's name to cover all the people that are deserving of it. It becomes problematic. Uh, some of the names that you just mentioned, uh, were definitely deserving of, of the names and the titles that they were given. But I'm cautious because for me to vote for anyone's name to be given to a, an item or an area, it's as if I have the say for the city. The, the gym and, and the park and, and the ball field, we don't own those things as commissioners and mayors. The city people own those things. And if we're going to entitle, uh, you know, in honor of a name to that building or that area, I would not be in favor of it unless we at least had some kind of voice and input from the, the citizens of the city. That's who really we should be listening to. Just like Chester, the one person that come and spoke on it had an idea that I had not thought about. And I think it, it, uh, has merit to the idea of covering a bigger group of people instead of singling out the one person. But I would be very cautious to naming any area of the city until we at least had some type of system that we go by. A lot of cities and counties have, have an actual way that they allow it or disallow it. They have a committee that's formed, and that committee looks at names and, you know, they look at, does the person reach to the level of, of that idea of naming something after them? And I think that's probably where I would be at.
Yeah, I think, Mayor, that's where the catch is. We, at what point in your life do you exceed those expectations to get something named? And the problem is that we've already done it. I mean, we've got streets that we set, parks and buildings named after people. So, but when does one achieve that, that responsibility to be given that? Uh, and that's why I brought it up. I was not here to watch any of his basketball games, so I, I don't know. These are all stories that I've heard, you know, it's, it's history, um, and that's remembering history. So I wanted this discussion, and this is great, you know, no matter what happens, I just wanted to hear what y'all's thoughts were on it.
I, uh, I don't think we need to name every park in the city and every building in the city after somebody. I mean, it's, so, so we, uh, we, we, we're reaching a point on our parks, all of us with all, all the names we've got already. But, uh, uh, so where do we stop? Do we form a committee to, to end up having some criteria for naming any city property after somebody? We probably should really, uh, at least reach out to other counties and, or cities and see what, if they have a, a system that, that you can follow to get a name on something.
Commissioner Hoffman hit on something that, you know, it is the public's part, and the public should come to us with the suggestion. It isn't us just pulling it out of the air and saying this is what we think. If you get a suggestion brought to us from the public, maybe it's a forum, and then we get a committee to, to talk about it, you know.
We, we recently had a committee, uh, Mr., uh, George Davis maybe with his graduate class, you know, they wanted to do some things about naming streets and those type things, and so I don't know where they are with that. But I put them in the right direction that, as far as the streets go. But, uh, so they have a point, but anyway. So do you want to go forward with this today? You want to, uh, discuss it more?
I think the motion would be a moot point at this point, Mayor.
Okay.
We'll just let the time go for now.
Okay, let's.
I, I'd like to say something.
Sure.
Uh, what, what, I understand what, um, Mr. Davis is saying, and he's right to the point. But sometimes you have people that exceed, um, a certain, um, level where, um, they actually do deserve something, um, um, putting their name to be remembered by. Uh, I'm not saying that, I, I think we need to continue to discuss it and, um, and allow some people to come and, and talk about it and, and see how they feel about the situation before we, we do it, you know, or before we move forward. Because like Commissioner Hoffman said, it is important for citizens to be involved in that because it's their part, you know. So I, I, I like the idea, uh, but I would like to see, um, a further, further discussion and maybe get some people in to, to talk about it and, and see where we go from there.
Okay, sounds good. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
All right, we'll move on. Current city project.
Yes, sir. If everybody turns page five and six, kind of give us a rundown of where we at with the projects within the city. There are any questions or comments about our current project?
Uh, the, look down at the ones that are out for bid. Uh, Jim, looking down the list, the first one, Tennis Court Reserves, an offer bid, when are those bids due?
Uh, I believe it's the fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth on that, uh, and Pickleball the same?
Yes.
Fifteenth, okay, uh. And any others that bids, filter replacements, we've already done that.
Yeah, that'll be on in just a few minutes.
Yeah, yeah, got that, so, uh. Okay, any other, uh, questions? Um, I like to see the ones in red because that, checking them off our list.
I just know we got a bad issue on First Street. That, that manhole.
Oh, good God, yeah.
I mean.
And I know y'all are patching it every time.
Yeah, until, until we can, you know, do something with that manhole, it's just, you know, just go back and just try to ease the pain.
Yeah. Yeah. Well-traveled road that we, it's under that Scott Ground, uh, and where is that one?
It's up top.
It's two, oh, Mayor, we've got the Scott Ground, but in the corner pairs on the sewer, we're going to have to do before the Scott Ground does four.
the sewer, we're gonna have to do before the Scott Ground gets bored on there. But what we did, we put in money for Hurricane Michael, the CDBG Dr. So we're anticipating hearing something in the next month or two to find out if we got funding for that. And that's when the first time we would like to be able to address this first figure camera and determine what repairs need to be made before it come back to.
What was the lead time on the Scott, uh, pavement part of it?
Uh, I believe this year, 2021 is the engineering portion. And then I believe the 22 is the actual plan. Correct, right? I think you're about two years out.
Okay. All right. Any questions? Any more questions about projects? We're moving along. So glad to see that.
Question?
Come on up.
Yes, sir.
Is it about this city projects?
City project? Uh, well, I may, I may, I was napping on the Washington Recreation. Uh, the question was, uh, the bathroom. What is the latest on the bathroom I had in Washington?
I've got some information on that.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I actually just supported it as well. I sent those plans that I had gotten to Bo Creel, when you could see Alpha View. There's a few minor changes he needs, which is being passed on to the Jasper, the engineer to correct. Once we get to it, then we'll have truly shelf ready plans for the board to sign what we're gonna do at that point. Okay?
You have some information?
Uh, I, I had a phone conversation with Commissioner Quinn from the county. There was some confusion as to what the county had offered. And it was my understanding, and I still believe that I'm correct, that the county had offered $75,000 in matching funds to the city to bring us to $150,000. And then later, I heard information that the county was not willing to actually give us $75,000. They were going to apply for a grant to cover their side. So me and Mr. Quinn spoke about that and I, and I told him that I was disappointed to hear that they were going to be waiting on their money. We weren't waiting on ours. And we, just to let you know, the city had indeed set $75,000 to the side. We're ready to get started. And the county is waiting on money. Hopefully they'll get the grant. I don't know if they'll get the grant. It's hard to tell on that. But he assured me that, that we would receive the money as quick as they did get the grant money. So in my mind, the project is on hold until we get the funding to move forward. And it may be several months before they hear back from the, you know, the response to the grant. I'm not sure what grant they applied for. But that's the update as far as I know. I, I still would like to hear from the county and, and be told that we found the money. Here you go. But I don't see that happening at this time.
Same thing for you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
And, and there'll be some discussion later on in the agenda, more discussion about that.
Yeah, I'd like to see us send a letter over to the county asking for the funding. At least what we've got to do, we have to do a better job on our end of these deals. And not just with the county, with any group. Phone calls and discussions just don't hold up. If we're gonna have an agreement, we need to have an agreement in writing.
Or at least some kind of paper trail.
Yeah, because you forget, you know, this is a good example of, we were confused about, was it 50,000? Was it 75,000? I think our records will indicate it was 75,000 on each side. But we need to have an agreement written down and then we can go back in time and see exactly what we all agreed on.
Mayor, if you'd like, I can go ahead and touch base on the portion that's under City Clarkson.
Yeah, yeah, can't pull that because that has to do with the bathroom.
It does. We've got a couple of grant opportunities coming up in the next couple of months. First, the first deadline is legislative appropriation. I don't know how much funding's gonna be available next year through the state, but we need to put something in. The deadline's next week, next Friday. Couple of ideas we've been throwing around, one was the Washington Gym Bathroom. If we can get the plans squared away and get those turned in, we could potentially put that in for legislative money. The other one was about the CDBG, extra funds needed for the Avenue C and D project, which we're about to get into in a few minutes. And the city engineer comes up and talks about it because we're going to get the funding for it. Splash pad. These are all things. And you may have other ideas. We just think something that's shelf ready to go ahead and turn something into legislative body, see if we can get it.
Yeah, I'll throw out my two cents words on legislative appropriation. I, I think the Washington Gym Bathroom project is a need. It's not a want. We want a splash pad, but it's really not a need right now. But with all the activity that goes on in, in the Washington Gym area, they need bathrooms upgraded there. And so I, I would like to, if you need to form a motion, I'd like to hear a motion to, to make that legislative appropriation request.
And Mayor, I'd say if you're only asking for $75,000, you have a lot better chance of getting a legislative appropriation.
I'd like to ask the whole amount.
Me too. We're gonna ask. We, we ask and we don't, we don't need a part of it.
And I, and I think 150 is, is nothing really, get right down to legislative appropriation.
You can count the number of appropriations that we've received on less than one hand.
Yes, right, right. So, so I, I think our representative and, and actually Senator Lauren Osley would certainly promote that request.
I would support that request 100% with the understanding that the building of the bathroom is not contingent on that money. Because then we'd be doing the same thing the county did. I, in other words, if we didn't get funded through the legislative request, we still, we still move forward and build the bathroom.
I think you're right, Chris. Probably. We still, we still look at several different avenues, no different things. We may find another source of funding, whichever one comes first.
Yeah, I'll buy, I'll buy with that.
I just feel like if we ask for 75 and we're putting up 75, that shows that we have skin in the game and we're a lot more likely to get it. We've had very poor return on asking for appropriations. And I think that it makes it look a lot better. Hey, we just built a new pavilion. We need this bathroom set up for outside use as well. And we're playing. We got money in the pot. I wouldn't just go after what the county's portion is and say, forget it to the county.
Okay.
I mean, I, I just, I think that one's, you risk losing it.
Whatever our best chance is to get, get money and get the same barrel.
Just one thing on the air, the side of caution, we still, we gotta get through those financials. So I don't know, I cannot tell you how much money we have in the PSJ area coffers, but I, I can assure you there's not $75,000.
Well, wait a minute. You just don't, I mean, in our budget, the city's budget, we set aside 75.
This was a PSJ RA project. I don't think we had any money in the city coffers. This was all coming through PSJ RA. This was a Bill Kennedy project that we.
Well, not a Bill Kennedy project, it's a PSJ RA project. We agreed to do it. We agreed to, we agreed to fund it. And I, I thought, you know, we, I thought it's.
I understand that the 75 was earmarked for that project to move from the PSJ over to what is now the city and county.
No. And what I understand, Mayor, is there's four outstanding checks built. When those clear, probably in the realm of about $40,000 will be left. We can't transfer that money to the Washington Gym without holding a meeting and changing our bylaws to allow for a larger than $20,000 one-time transfer. So we would have to move that money to the other.
So with that being said, we need to ask for the 150, don't you? We don't have 75 to match it.
Yeah, we usually ask for a million. I think 150 is.
Dropping by.
Is pennies to.
We only have $40,000 set aside for the bathroom. We don't know. That's what we feel at this point.
They're doing order on the PSJ RA. So, so I, Commissioner Ashbrook, you okay with the honor? Go ahead and ask about the whole thing since we don't have 75.
I'm a gambling man, Mayor.
Okay, I'll entertain them. Motion to go do it.
I'm not gonna make it.
Well, motion to put on our legislative appropriations wish list, funding of $150,000 for the Washington Gym Bathroom, with the understanding if the, if the funding does not come forward, we still move forward in building a bathroom.
Okay.
I see.
One second, Commissioner Lang. Everybody understand? Any more discussion? All in favor of I? I. At the same time, motion passed five and over.
Because going back to, we have other costs of money. But that does not mean that there's not other funds available. That we talked about earlier, we just spent some money out of that for the new, for the new pavilion. We had, what, 50,000, we think roughly, in there, strictly for the Washington Gym. So that still leaves you 35 every day. There's other costs of money.
Yeah, we can find it. But I still think it's like Commissioner Hoffman says, a penny's, a penny's request or legislative appropriation. All right, let's go to the public works. Mr. John.
Mayor, I don't have.
Excuse me, one more.
Can we finish together? Two grant opportunities.
Sure.
Yeah, sure. The next one is the brick program. We touched base with our, the first group is doing the grant writing for us. They're working on a task order. They think this may be appropriate for the city hall complex if the board's okay with it. But I was doing with these a month. So we need some in the board and by.
Let's go ahead for everyone we can.
I have a question on that. We really don't have any idea what it's gonna cost to build. Is there phasing in the brick program? Can we get the engineering architect done first and then go into another phase to ask for more? Or you have to ask for it all upfront?
It's a good question. That's what we're trying to do while asking, see if we can do this kind of thing. Most time what you have is you have administrator calls in there, you have engineering department down. And then what'll happen is as the project comes in, they look like you gotta do engineering work, first architect work. Most of the time.
What all, Jim, do you have any idea what they're thinking as far as including?
Basically, what we, what we did to start with was we covered the fire department and the flipper. So this will be on down. So the last piece of disposal was to have a, a government complex where you have a brand new, government complex that would house a commission chamber, a one-stop shop to make sure that we can put everybody in, that somebody can come in, maybe new business in, whether it's the bill department, code enforcement, city commissioner. We've got no space that all those people can be housed in one building. And it's a safe place where people can go to their areas.
That's kind of what I want to hear. Jim, do you need a motion for a task order to, to go forward with that? Or you don't really need one, or?
Um, if you could just give us a motion that, that you want us to apply for the brick program, I will work on the task order. It's less than $10,000. We'll be authorized by staff. If it's more than that, I've got to bring it back to you there for a task order.
Okay.
Motion approved, Mayor.
Okay. Motion back to Mr. Ashbrook. Grant, same second back to Mr. Lowery. That's a good, good grant, good something to go forward. In discussion, all in favor of I? At the same time, motion passed five and over.
And the last one, we don't have to make a decision at this meeting, but it's due to the end of February. These are all new grants, guys. They're coming down in February. The rules are changing as we speak. But the next one is another disaster recovery grant. This one, we've had discussions with the water management district, you know, we didn't have enough money or we're not allowed for the coverage of the pipe from the valve field. They suggested that this may be an opportunity here to apply for that one. Also talking about different things that we wanted to do as far as sidewalk replacements down on Monument Avenue. This may be an opportunity there, basically put in money you're feeling and you calculate how many sidewalks you want to put in. Be thinking about those by the next meeting. We need to make a decision to get something put together for those. That's kind of what I think it is on those type of.
What, what kind of money is in this grant?
Millions. But you gotta remember.
Big chunk. Everybody's trying to get a piece of.
Got it. What you want to do is still gonna be divided. I believe this was very similar being broken down by the non-affected county side for Hurricane Michael. So you still got a force to share based on the need of each.
All right. We keep shooting the ball. We don't get one.
Are you saying you have to pick one project or can you pick multiple projects?
You can apply for a couple. I think you can apply for, it's either three or five. I'll try to get those, that information before the next meeting so you can decide how many you want to apply for. But you gotta remember how much work's involved in these things put together. So, and we gotta play a grant writer to do it. But I think there's nothing wrong with it. At least apply for two of them.
Jim, would stormwater qualify under disaster recovery?
Potentially, you know, it depends on how, I mean, basically you've got to show things that was damaged on Hurricane Michael. Like we can show the piping was damaged from all the infiltration, how much came in and collapsed. You can show that with the sidewalk, how much damage was done. That's what you gotta kind of think about.
All right. What else? Sorry. All right, Mr. John.
Mayor, I have an update. Boy, that's crushing for me.
A question, though.
We don't know. Honestly, they didn't show up while we were there last night.
Really?
Really. But for some unknown reason, we're seeing brown water in areas that shouldn't. City Hall is boring, Gym is boring, hungry alleys. I'm still, we're still trying to figure it out. If they did come, when they came, they certainly didn't notify us and they didn't show up in the structure. There was no change in the building. So there are a few areas downtown that should have changed. So I've sent an email with Daniel Fussell was calling from St. Jude Company, expressing my dislike for what happened, you know, what happened last night based on his contractors. Had to run back to you and we have to follow up on that.
All you need?
I've got one question. On the 20th Street project where we put the pipe under the road?
Yes.
Has the box been installed?
Um, my understanding is not a box. It was just an inlet as far as a round pipe.
Okay.
That one was complete.
All right. Well, I noticed the other day we had a lot of water standing there in that very lot. And I remember we had discussion about what the city would do.
Correct.
And what the homeowner or owner of the lot would be to do. Was there an agreement that the lot owner would supply a culvert pipe in the front of their lot?
There was not a written agreement. Now, my understanding is that the, excuse me, the same contractor that did that work for us as well as the homeowner on the left.
Yeah.
Was to do that work for Lance and Butler on the right. And he was to install another culvert addition there, correct?
Okay. Cause what little I know about that, it looked to me like if they did have a pipe with another way for that water to leave the west side, I guess it would be, it would have went through the pipe tied into what we put in and not been a problem at all.
Right. And the last conversation I had with Will Kim was he was gonna do that for Lance. I just don't think it's happened.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And Mayor, the only request I have is if Josh can come in behind me. He's got some things to do at the office. If he can jump in a little bit.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. And I got a problem with that. Josh, we may, we can have him first on the list sometime if he wants to.
How are y'all?
We're good, sir.
Um, run through our list. First, I've just got the stormwater master plan. I took our, our offer now. We're still working alone. I'm hoping by the end of the month to have that full report ready and presented to the city so we can give out to Northwest Florida and see what kind of ideas they've got for projects on it. So we're working for the end of this month to try to get that ready. Port City Trail, I do have some good news. The EP gave us a conditional notice to proceed, which means that we can do everything on the project except the lining until we're able to sort out the paperwork for Duke. But at least they gave us the opportunity to go in and engage a contractor and proceed. So I've given him the notice to proceed. And we'll have a pre-construction meeting with him first of next week. I'll get John and Jim involved and we'll try to get that project kicked off and started. CDBG sewer, that's the big item to discuss that Jim was talking about earlier. And I hope that everyone can understand my math. But we spoke the last time, there were places within this, once it was hammered, instead of it being an eight-inch gravity sewer was the standard, it was only six-inch. And that restricted diameter, you know, does not allow, you know, for growth within that area. It doesn't allow for additional connections. Plus, it's obstructed. So you can't line six-inch pipe because it decreases the diameter of that pipe and obviously won't allow you to have additional capacity in the sewers. So the cheapest option, the only option, is to do what they call pipe first, which is basically where they drag ahead through, burst that pipe and behind it comes in an eight-inch HDP pipe. The quick math on that was, is the construction budget that was given as part of the grant was 470,580. The existing eight-inch gravity sewer that is intact, in order to do the CITP lining for that, is 140,96576. And then the quote. And then the quote from the contractor to do the pipe bursting for all the six inches is a four ninety-two, seven sixty-four, one fifty-four. If you add the four ninety-two and the one forty together and subtract that number from what the construction budget was, you have a shortfall of one sixty-three, one forty-seven, thirty. So that's the, basically the amount that is left out to be able to do the pipe bursting for six inches, which would upgrade the sewer in that area to an eight-inch gravity sewer.
Well, needs to be done.
And I can confirm that that four ninety-two is a very good price because if you look at the original bids, the next closest bid, which the bid was based on lining everything, was over six hundred thousand. So he's proposing with his added in, he's still as low as the second bidder was on a very basic bid price. So the, his pricing is very fair, old one giving us all the pipe bursting.
Mayor, this is one I was alluding to already. You could apply for a grant somewhere else if you wanted to, but I believe ti, timing's a business on this. We've already bid this project out and we already have, uh, several hundred thousand dollars, over four hundred thousand dollars coming in from D E O. So at this point, staff recommendation is that we bring money out of our sewer repair maintenance. This could affect a project going on down the road into, into both years. We've already started this project and we know that this sewer needs rehab on there. So our recommendation is go ahead and pull that money out of that repair maintenance in there for the hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars shortfall we're gonna give this project.
How long would it take to replace that pipe?
I don't have that answer, and I can get it to you, though.
I'm talking about days, a week, or? I'm just wondering, is it, there'd be a lot of businesses?
Right, and that's something that we've gotta sit down. We had a brief conversation about this yesterday, how, how you could stage that. I think it's gonna be staged in small sections where you don't take areas out of service for long. But I can get that information together and give it to you guys because we understand, I mean, we don't wanna take businesses or residents out of service alone. I mean, there's bypass people involved in this. So the goal is to try to keep people going, but I don't have, he didn't provide us a timeline. We just got the pricing in and I got it to these guys where we can try to make a decision on what we wanted to do.
Commissioner Lowery, you got a question? Yeah, I, I'm not familiar with that technology, but I know you guys are engineers. But how comfortable are you guys with it on that pipe bursting?
I mean, it, it is the only option, you know, other than digging it up and putting gravity sewer in and that costs a big, pretty high. What that is. It's a technology that we haven't used much, but it's industry standard with these guys and they do it all the time. It's used, this application is likely what it's used for. It's a, it's been around for a long time. I'm not uncomfortable with them doing the pipe bursting for this.
Well, one, uh, couple of questions. Uh, the one sixty-three shortfall, is that all going to the contractor or some part of that engineering?
Just to the contractor. This is construction. That, that four seventy-five eighty is construction money on.
Okay, all right. Uh, the other question is, uh, we go forward with it, when would they start pipe bursting scenario? Is that gonna be on the front burner or back burner, or where is it in the process?
That, I mean, that's just gets to his, you know, logistically, we haven't worked that out yet and that's my, my apologies. Probably information I should have gotten, but we literally got that quote about two days ago, so.
We're gonna need that, we call the area of residents, you know, be, be calling and.
Before we started construction, we would work all that out, of course.
Kind of, how far do you think you, uh, beside, I mean?
Well, as, as I've spoken before, all of the video it has done. So the process was video everything, clean it, and then come back and see what we have. Cause you basically, you bid it out on the assumption that everything is eight-inch gravity sewer and you're no liner. So they video and cleaned everything. They found the eight-inch gravity sewer. And then they found out that the rest that was thought to be eight-inch was actually six-inch. So to answer your question, Scopes has done the video and cleaned it. They still have all the lining in this to do, but they didn't move forward with any other part of the project because we're going over budget. So before they start, they wanna have a clear way to head forward, you know? Do I just line this eight-inch and leave the six-inch as is? Or do we burst this six-inch and line the eight-inch as well?
I don't think we can continue to leave things as they are. That's why we have problems on First Street Garrison. I think that was the idea many, many years ago. And now presently, we're having to fix things. And I'm not gonna support Band-Aid projects anymore, so. If it's your recommendation, and I believe I heard Jim say it is his recommendation, then I'm gonna support doing it like it needs to be done.
So I agree. I mean, it, it, something needs to be done there.
You can't leave a, a smaller pipe under the ground when engineers and, and, uh, different bid, uh, construction companies are all saying you gotta fix this. Cause if you don't, we're just passing along the problem to the next group who comes.
That's great.
Okay, we need a motion, uh, we'll call it a change order for the CDVG grant, uh, in the amount of a hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty cents. Motion by Commissioner Langston.
Exactly.
Second by Commissioner Hopman, discussing.
And it, understanding that this is where we pay out of city corporate, you know, company.
That, I mean, I think that's intended as a motion we, we swallow hard and, and find the money. But we've already got four hundred and something.
Four seventy-five.
Four seventy-five, yeah, yeah, on this project, so. And we do have some, some, uh, money that State Department owes us, uh, to something, I think.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Yeah, and we're trying to get that, so that'll help. I mean, that'd pay for it if we finally get it, but, so, okay. Any more discussion? All in favor of I? I have the same sign, most passed five oh. Let's get it done right.
Um, only other two items are Long Avenue and First Street. We're working on the bid documents on that one. I think Jim is still, you're still waiting on us to go ahead.
We're still waiting on the green light on that to go out to bid this.
Um, and then N R C S, we finally did get the green light on N R C S and we're working on the bid documentation there. Hopefully in the next week or so, we'll have that project. That's the date when the project will have that approved.
Uh, real quick, um, the, uh, the ditch at, uh, Miss Soda, on Miss Soda Drive that we talked about a good while back about piping that and so forth. Uh, I'd like to, you know, us to try to move forward and do something that's, that's unsightly. And if we're gonna build a nice, uh, uh, gazebo or some sort down there, we need to do something with that, uh, cat-tail ditch. And it goes to nowhere, really. It, it goes nowhere towards the light house. I think it drains back toward the pond there at the TDC building, is that right?
Looks like it does.
So, so, I mean, why, why, so, why we couldn't just cover it up? I don't know. We put a pipe in it, I don't know, what good's that gonna do? I mean, does it go out to the bay or to the pond?
The best I can tell just from walking around that it drains to that ditch that runs parallel to the TDC and then that eventually goes out to the bay.
Yeah.
There is a small ditch.
Cool, yeah.
Uh, that, it might not tie into it where you can see, but I think, oh, underground.
Anyway, I'd like, I'd like to find out if we can just go ahead and do that and, uh, let's get that thing cleaned up, make that place.
You're saying just cover the ditch up, not pipe it or anything?
Yeah, you tell me if a pipe we're doing good, put a pipe in and cover it up. I mean, it doesn't seem like maybe, I mean, water coming off that road is now going in that ditch. We pipe it, cover it, it's just gonna go all the way down toward where the gazebo is. So if we can do something with it, configure it out, if we, if we have to leave the ditch there, if we do, then we pipe it. And can we swell it or make it swell so it ain't gonna run off that high road down, straight down into the pond?
I'll go check. I, I know that was permitted a couple of years ago and I'll go see how the permit's written and, and if we can modify that or if we have to hold. I think it was permitted as pipe.
It was, yeah.
Um, so I just need to go back and do some investigation to see if we can deviate from that permit.
That'd be great.
That's all we got?
All right, question, John? Thank you, buddy, appreciate it. All righty, let's see, Public Works, we got Mr. Larry coming up, I believe.
Uh, hopefully a couple of projects we can check off the seat. Uh, on page seven of the agenda, RFP two thousand twenty twenty-one, uh, bids for the rehab and clarifiers one to two. Uh, the low bidder of Dunn Industrial, was formerly Complete Industrial. And it's the same company we used to paint clarifiers three and four back in two thousand seventeen. Uh, they did do a good workforce back then and, uh, we'd like to recommend that you approve them. Their low bid was, uh, eighty thousand, one hundred, and we budgeted eighty-seven-five.
How are three and four looking after three years of their work on?
Very good, they're holding up very well.
They're holding up good?
Yes, I would recommend it.
Yeah, okay. Everybody understand what's going on with that? If so, I'll need a motion to accept a low bidder.
Motion for a low bidder.
Okay, Mr. Ashbrook, motion, accept low bidder of Dunn Industrial, eighty thousand, one hundred dollars.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lowery. All in favor of I?
I.
I have the same sign. All right, let's turn them loose.
Okay, next is RFP two thousand twenty twenty-two, that's the filters. Uh, which you have a handout I think for. Uh, this will replace the last set of original filters that the workplace.
That's just one, you have to buy it, send it over.
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, the low bid of Sinor for seventy-nine, nine eighty, we'd like to accept, uh, we would recommend for approval. This is five thousand, hundred of what we budgeted.
Wonderful. And mustn't accept low bid?
Some of them.
Some of them. Commissioner Ashbrook, second, second, Commissioner Lowery. All in favor of I?
I.
I have the same sign, that's great. Save a little money.
They're five thousand dollars toward that pipe fraud, didn't you?
Yeah.
Okay, Mayor, that's all I have.
All right, any questions? Thank you, Larry.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Okay, wastewater, anybody wanna take that one? We, Jim, we.
Mayor, probably just going on out there. He is, he has to do some replacements on equipment that piping has never do. He is working on replacing a pump so we can get back to spraying it, spraying it. Yeah, hopefully that'll be done the next couple of days, we'll be doing some testing.
Okay, all right. Mike?
Uh, yes, sir. I'm sorry, I was still taking minutes here, I'm trying to catch up. Yes, sir, so we've gotten two quotes on a vending machine, uh, for the boat ramp that we think will, will work. One of the quotes comes in under our bid threshold. Uh, John and I have reviewed it. Uh, we believe that, uh, that, that the, this is an electrical hookup that would wire, uh, the funds directly to a bank account. Uh, so we wouldn't need, uh, a DSL service, uh, to do it. I had a vendor, they, they supplied a couple contacts, one in Pasco County that has five of these machines in place. They don't have any at a boat ramp, but they do have two that are at beach parking, uh, lots, so they are on, on the coast. Uh, they've had no problems, uh, they like the machines. They, they did say they had, uh, one of the parking lots that had a bar and that went up and down and, and they took it out two weeks after they installed it because of the backlog and it just wasn't working for them. But they seem to like the product. Um, John and I have reviewed the technical aspects of it, we think it'll work fine. Uh, and our recommendation would be to go with the low quote.
That's for Vantec?
For Vantec, for nine thousand, six hundred and forty dollars.
Like, what are the pay options with this machine?
It's both credit card and cash, uh, no change, so it would be exact, uh, exact, um. I don't think we got into discussion about whether they would accept American Express or Visa, those kinds of things. Uh, but, but cer- certainly they indicated as soon as we started, as soon as we approved and gave them a P O, then we would start working through the, the details of how do we set up the bank transfer with the bank and, and what the electrical needs were and so forth. So some of the details, we haven't sorted through until we actually give them a P O. But from all intents and purposes and discussion, uh, you know, I have, I think I have a copy of the page stub for, let's see, it says, um, I don't know if that's in there or not. Did we put a copy of a sample of the?
Eighteen. I mean, eighteen.
Yeah, so eighteen and nineteen. Um, you know, whether or not we can change the color on that receipt or not, uh, that's something we could discuss to give the police some easier way to identify one week from another. Um, so that's one thing we, we could discuss. But ultimately, we're gonna have the same problem with verification of anybody paid as we have now. They, they take the envelope, they're supposed to tear off the stub and put it in the window. Well, they're not, seventy-five percent of the people don't do that. Now, this might be a little simpler because, you know, people are used to going through parking garages, pulling a tab and putting it in the window. So, you know, this, not having the, the envelope involved may be easier for people to know, okay, I gotta put this in my window. But, but for enforcement purposes, you're still gonna have that same problem. Someone not putting their receipt in their window and then coming back and saying, well, I paid it, you know?
Well, if they, I'd say if they didn't, I mean, you can be over track, backtrack and see if they did pay.
That's true, absolutely.
They get a ticket and have to bring it to the court and still, they probably still have to pay like a seven-dollar court call or filing costs, however much the city's gonna pay the clerk to file. I mean, same thing as getting a failure to carry a driver's license ticket. You have a driver's license, left at home, state trooper writes you a ticket for not carrying a driver's license. You gotta report to court and have to say, send it to fifty, the bottom of the table.
One of the important things, which is, which is a handout Jim gave earlier, uh, Josh, he put some revision, revision files around the options, locations. Where our current pay box is at is not the location and technology.
Right.
So, you know, it was going, it needs to be moved. We threw a couple of options, like I said, in revision files, if you can do it. One's on the right as you go down, or one, option two is on your way out, it's not an existing investment. We don't, we don't know that one's any better than the next, uh, but it does put it close to power sources and other areas where if the city wants to put a camera on it, you know, uh, things like that, we could do it in the location. So, you know, if we do decide to move board, that's one thing the board needs to, you know, understand and agree upon as far as that location. And you know why, I'm like a citizen, purpose.
But this does take it a little bit away, more away from the water element there that, cause we know right now where that current machine's at. If that electronic machine was there where the cat went storm, we gotta scramble to get that machine picked up and moved. Cause we know it's an harmful way. And also too, with people backing down, at least once a year, uh, John has to go out and figure out how to move it. Yeah, we picked it up three times a year.
Yeah, I think the general consensus is on the right makes sense because that's where we're asking people to stage their boats, right?
Yeah.
Uh, um, the, one of the, one of the indicators, or one of the problems that Pasco County did talk about is that the machine goes quiet, um, and that you have to touch the screen to, to reactivate it. So, so we would have to have some good signage to indicate touchscreen to start, you know, something like that.
And, yeah, we could even put something on the asphalt, you know, itself that says pay here, stop pay here. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think too, uh, we've, we've been offered free, uh, assistance from the, was it Save the Bay Group? One of those groups, uh, from Dr. May had said that they would be willing to help with educating, uh, maybe some of their membership could be there for several weekends, um, to educate people. What, that's the thing, once people get used to it, anything we do is better than what we currently have.
Yeah. Yeah, we did discuss the repair and maintenance on the thing. They indicated most of the items are plug and play, uh, and they suggested that we have our electricians on stand. They do bring somebody out to do training during the installation on the operation and so forth. So we have both our engineer, both of our electricians on site, on hand, uh, when we do the install so that we can see, uh, what possible items we may need to replace in the future. And a lot of these items you can stock, so we can have them in stock. Uh, so we can talk to Pasco County, find out what the, has failed on their machines and what we need to have in stock.
And the point is still, they're not expensive.
They're not.
They're really not expensive at all, you're twelve dollars for different things, so it's not like you have a, a huge investment to do for.
How much is in our, uh? How much is in our, uh, boat?
It was hundred and six, hundred and six K?
Oh, wow. And that's where I think the money should come from.
Yes.
We, we passed the order a long time ago.
Yes, sir.
I've got a question, uh, on the bottom of page eight, it goes to page nine, all those items that are in those columns are included in the ninety-six forty?
No.
You've got?
No. Those are the repair parts, that's a list of the repair parts. So just the items in the top section, which is the machine, the training, the software, are included.
Standard warranty, which is unlimited tax for three months and a warranty for twelve months, so if we have something after three months, we gotta pay a hundred fifty dollars an hour.
Yeah, the tech, the technician is based out of Alabama, and, and so, uh, so, so he would have some drive time to get to us if we needed a technician.
Right, from the time he leaves home to the time he goes back.
But it's not in New Jersey, you know, he is in Alabama, so that's not as bad.
And telephone support is a hundred fifty dollars, and, and then all these other items or parts, it looks like.
That's correct.
I was just looking for the hidden stuff like software support.
Yeah, we will have an annual operating cost, so the software subscription fee is eleven hundred dollars, eleven forty.
So about a hundred bucks a month, we, we gonna have that.
But that was, that was actually less than half of what the other guy.
That's, yeah, and it's gonna be that on, on any of them we get.
Right, we have to buy, you know, envelopes, and, you know, we do have some operational costs with the current system, you know?
Your big cost is more like it's gonna be the convenience fee, it's gonna be charged to the city at this point in time, and that ten dollars is not gonna be out of probably seven dollars, based on whatever the credit card business is gonna be doing the process.
Thirty percent?
Well, a lot of them, we need to find another one if they charge us more than two and a half percent.
Two to three percent is a credit.
Usually what they do is they'll have to do it by two cents, they'll, they'll start off between two and four dollars, and then they go to a proceeding, which is always high.
And any, usually, usually anything under ten dollars is a, is a higher fee, because they've got to process a whole lot of ten dollars, and they, they don't like to do that, but still, um, is this a picture of one?
That, that's an example of one, uh, now, we do have the ability to, to, do a wraparound design for that, so there's, I think there's another picture of another one, so we can set up a design, yeah, there's another one that, that shows the design for a park, that, so we will have the input to, to, uh, to design it, exactly, yeah.
Right, right, I would, I would certainly like to go with John and, and look at where a couple of these two places that, that you're considering putting them before I go forward with it, I, I just wanted, we've, we've come this far, let's try to get it right, and let's try to get it convenient.
Sure.
And that way, it'll take headaches off of us and get what we wanna get out of that, but, uh.
What's the lead time on getting one of these?
Uh, thirty to forty-five days.
We gotta think about spring break time is when really the boats start kicking.
That's right, but, but I, I would, I would recommend that each of us maybe get to John, and I, I can't tell a lot, I, I know about where he's talking about, but, but I, I don't want it halfway down toward the bulk sale either.
Yeah.
So, I'd like to, I'd like to take a look at it, and I, I feel like the one coming in on the right is gonna be closer to the ramp.
Yeah.
Is that what everybody's kind of?
And there's power there, because we have a pump.
That's correct.
Right, and that's what.
But we, we gave an alternative just in this guy.
Yeah.
This machine takes coins or doesn't take?
Um, I, I think it was bills, but I, I, my, my memory, I think it was bills only.
Yeah, it's got a picture for coins, even then, scrub the coin part of it. I would suggest doing away with that, because the coin mechanism.
Yeah, no, it was, it was cash.
And what is it?
All, all paper and cred, I mean, what?
Ten dollars, what do we charge it to offer? Ten dollars.
Why? I just, I mean, I like the way the money flows straight to the bank, uh, from the credit cards side of it.
Right.
I mean, what do y'all think about getting ones that just take the credit cards, period?
Well, we certainly.
Have more money? I mean, that, this, this company doesn't have one?
No, we could, we could drop it, we, we specifically told them we wanted the ability to do both, so we could certainly remove that option and make it credit card only, yes.
How many y'all think somebody drives down there and launches a boat, does not have a credit card in their pocket?
Very rare.
Very, yeah, I mean, how many do you think, one, the housing may not have a credit card?
debit card, credit card, I mean, any, they can call it, not as well.
Yeah, and then, and then we, we don't have to worry about our staff going down there and, and the count and the cash, all that type stuff.
Yeah, and certainly we can remove that item, yes, we can remove the cash.
We definitely take out the element of worry about somebody walking off with a pizza machine, and the city having to go down there, I know, we have to go down on the busy days, several of us go down a couple of times a day during the scholarships.
Yeah, we sent two employees, we, since we're handling the cash, we sent two employees.
We have to stick around on the weekends and go down there with lots of people, work our way down there to clean out the box in front of everybody.
I'd, I'd love to, can you reach out and see if that'll reduce the price?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Can we wait till next meeting, guys? And, and use time to go down, look at the locations.
No, no, Jim, we were just talking about the, the convenience field, and once we figure that out, you may wanna set yourself accordingly on there, okay? Do you want to raise that amount from ten dollars to twelve dollars, or whatever that cost is for the cost of that?
Let the customer pay you.
The customer cover. Something to think about, we don't have to do it today, we're not in that.
Yeah, and we, and we've held off on the, on the pay station sign, we haven't had that produced yet, we approved the other signs and we got them out there, but we still have signs to be done, once we figure out the process, uh, of, of the, of this station. So we still have some signage to do.
Second, do that, maybe get some papers of the one that just got strictly credit card. All right, I think that's.
Mr. Ray, what do you think about approving Mike to be able to make the purchase or put it for the purchase as long as it's under the bid threshold? If he comes back and finds out that by doing away with the cash option, it's actually a little lower, as long as it's under the ten thousand, we can at least get the machine coming, and then know what kind of electronic or power we have to have supplied to it.
Certainly.
I'm behind, I'm behind with that, too, I'm behind it with, cut down the.
I just hate to lose two more weeks.
Yep.
You know?
Motion to purchase boat ramp pay machine.
Okay, that's Michael, Mr. Ashbrook, second.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Lowry, give us a pay machine, and we'll, we'll work on the logistics of when we get it.
Just give me a call here, whomever y'all need, we'd be glad to be there.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, uh, any more discussion, all in favor, aye? Other same sign, all right.
That was a long time coming.
Yeah. I think it'll work out fine, we'll see, finally get there. All right, let's see where we are here now, uh, go to horse gun.
We, we do have two that are out for bid currently now for demolition, so have had a few calls the last two days, so we're waiting for those to come in, more likely those to come to you at the next commission meeting, uh, to see if you want to award a contract.
Okay, and that's the two, let's see, that's Avenue C and?
Avenue A and Martin Luther King is the first one, we're there, the other one is on Tom Boulevard, that the last one is.
Right, so why did one of them Avenue C?
Uh, there's a way for an hearing, but it's not at the B and J.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
Several, there's a lot more that have gone through the process, but during that thirty day window, if they take care of the whole country, probably.
All right, all right. Leash department, I'm gonna say.
I've got a couple of things and some questions. Uh, I've got the study that we did on Seventh Street, which was not very out of the ordinary, and it was there for a little over a week, I think, had about sixty-two hundred cars pass by, and the average speed was twenty-four, point eight nine miles an hour, which is not very much. Uh, Avenue A was a little bit more, had a ton of cars, it was there during the holidays, uh, got about ten percent that are doing excessively above the speed limit, getting a lot of fifties, fifty-fives, stuff like that, uh, mostly in the mornings and around the three thirty.
That's pretty fast for a residential ride.
It is, it is twenty-five, so, getting a lot, but the average speed there was twenty-five, is, uh, thirty-three point eight one, which is significantly higher than any of the other streets that we did studies on, uh, as far as how many miles an hour above the speed limit. I think the average speed here there was doing about thirty-seven, which is twelve over, which is, uh, quite a lot.
Well, they need to brush up those fifty-five or something.
Yeah, uh, we've been working on it, and we've been a little low manpower, so, uh, we're kinda struggling through right now, but as soon as we get back full power, we're gonna, we're gonna get to work on that new thing.
Hopefully get some attention.
Yes, sir. Everything I see about Seventh Street, I don't see anything on there to be concerned about.
And that's from long to, uh, mine?
That's from the stores to, to.
Long and by sixty-two hundred and how long?
And, and about eight days.
Eight days.
Yes.
That's, uh.
The mornings, I guess people going to get coffee, and on any street in town, around this, like in the morning, and around three-thirty in the afternoon, it'll be just about.
So Chief, is the plan to try to hit Avenue A hard for a couple of weeks and then do this survey again?
Yes, I, I actually had to send the instrument back off yesterday, because we're, we're still getting a lot of the hundred and twenty-nine hour on every street, even on Seventh Street. So, uh, I called the technician, and he said, yes, send it back to me, I need to work on those.
Yeah, converts.
Yeah, the top fuel drags are running on Seventh Street. Uh, and questions about the, the parking ordinance, uh, we don't have city citations, I'm, I'm gonna get those, uh, through SmartCom, which is the, uh, program that we use to write citations and do our charging document, and, uh, the, and the fines, we have a fines and forfeitures fund, if that comes down to it, and it's all gonna be up to you guys, how y'all wanna enforce it, whether it's zero dollars, or you wanna do officer discretion as far as some people get warnings, some people get tickets, however y'all wanna enforce it, I just, we haven't talked about any of that, as far as how hard y'all wanna be on it.
Yeah.
You know, if we wanna be down there and really stroke everybody, or if we wanna give everybody warnings first, or, and then the fines, we, we don't, we work the boat ramp pretty religiously, and, uh, we don't get any of the funding from the boat ramp, and if the fines could go into the fines and forfeiture fund to help us buy equipment for speeding and stuff like that.
I think, I mean, they, I think that's where it should go.
I would be opposed to that. And here's my thinking, I think Jake will know exactly where I'm coming from, the minute you do that, then you're going to put on the police officers and the police department this, this cloud of suspicion, that they are out there writing tickets to do one of two things, reach a quota that we as commissioners set, which we will never do, or I will never do, or two, they're generating their own money for their department. I have no problem with, with working in-house to match funding that comes through, but it does, I don't think it needs to go straight into any departmental funding, uh, because it just causes problems down the road. Now, I would like to say, uh, or answer, the first question was, uh, that you raised is, you know, are you, are you gonna use officer discretion, or, or, or is the commissioners gonna be the ones that direct you?
I mean, I just need a direction.
Yeah, my direction is simple, the commissioners don't need to be telling the police chief how to run the police department and how to do police work, because, uh, that's not what we've done before. So, I would be in support of allowing the police chief to set the guidance and instill in the officer. I think the reason you have the job, one of the reasons that I supported you for the job was because I think you have a level head, and you go by the cop's philosophy, and that is use the least amount of law enforcement necessary to gain compliance, and we had this discussion more than once. So, I would be very comfortable with letting you come up with that policy, because I know that's your, your, uh, background, I know that's how you believe. If, if you don't, if we find out that it becomes a, a problem, then, you know, through Jim Anderson, they would have a discussion of, of, hey, we're getting some feedback that the city's not happy with the enforcement, I don't believe it's the, the job of.
Yes, sir. I just wanted some direction on, uh, we haven't really discussed it on my side of it, besides the attorney side, and I just wanted some direction.
Yeah, and I'd be asking the same thing if I was in your.
Yeah, and, you know, in my opinion, we should, once it's up and we start it, we just give a, kind of a two week, you know, two weekends or something, let them get used to it being down there, and see how it's going, and, and then go from there. But, I mean, I don't wanna kill every freshman with a hundred fifty dollar fine, because he left his credit card at home, or something to that effect.
Right, we're looking for the ones that wanna show out at the boat landing, and say that they're from Port St. Joe or Gulf County, when they live in Mexico Beach, and they have a boat that they leave every now and then here, and give your officer a mouthful, that's who I want you to deal with.
Yeah.
I had forgotten that story.
Yeah. Point I was trying to make, line forfeiture, they're gonna spend extra time, so they need to be remunerated somehow.
Absolutely.
We got a suggestion to work, Liam, you alluded to the order, the resolution that's in place that directs that any money that's collected down there has to be spent out of the city's waterfront, that's in, that's currently what's in place, you just amend that to add in, or the police.
Right, we, we, we took a little egg on the face when we bought police radios a while back, I remember, uh, don't you guys?
They're gonna be doing a lot more now to increase that.
Yeah, so, so we need to be cognizant of that and start figuring out a way we can, I mean, the police, uh, you know, when they, when they need something, we can just.
Because I wanna do a schedule a couple of times a day for my guy to go down there and do a walk-through, and, uh, some of it he can drive through, but most of it's gonna have to be walk-through or a parking deep.
Well, I, I think also on the busy weekends, we would be supporting the idea of paying the officer overtime to just handle the confusion, and, and of, I would hope that your guidance would be to whoever that was working, now would be shifted from just the chaos of the launching and, and loading of boats, to focusing on making sure we're getting paid.
Yeah.
It'd make it, it'd be easier on everybody then.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have. All right, any more questions? Thank you, sir, I appreciate it, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, we're done city clerk, we got a couple of citizens that wanna be heard anymore.
Man, uh, not to kick the old fan down the road some more, some of the problems that I just wanted, ask us to have a discussion on, because I have to deal with some of those people that you guys don't deal with, especially when we get ready to have an event at the gym, and we're not here to discuss anything against the workforce or whatever, but that's, that's one deal, but when we get ready to have an event at the gym, I got folks coming up, and why we can't do this, and this is our gym, and, and I know you hear the same thing, but, uh, we appreciate what happened this weekend, we just did our, uh, midnight service out, uh, watch night service out, and it turned out real good, but the idea that when people come up, why we can't do this, and why we can't do that, is a discussion I think we need to start having with the public, uh, because they'll come up and they'll accuse me, they might accuse Eric or somebody else for not being able to do, uh, process with the gym, and somehow, we're, we're, we're looking at maybe down the road of how that gym can also turn some revenue in, in the future, but at the same time, we're dealing with people who really question about who the gym belongs to, and how can we not, you know, use stuff that's in the gym and stuff like that, and I understand that the workforce own their equipment, and I have no issue with that, so what we're gonna be trying to do is apply for a grant that would get some equipment in there that will belong to the public, because anytime you go in the gym, you can't, you know, use a chair to sit in there, or whatever, because it belongs. Because anytime you go in the gym, you can't, you know, use a chair to sit in there or whatever, because it belonged to a private company. Uh, I, my question was, you know, to the people, was this right here, how do we solve that? And so, the only way we can solve it is by having our own equipment somewhere where we can always, you know, use it without having to get permission from somebody to use the equipment that's already in the gym. So, it's just something I think we need to discuss down the road, is how we can make that happen. Uh, because like I say, you got a public building, and you got a lot of people who will not come to the city council meeting, but they'll sit there and they're criticizing, you know, so we have that issue. But to make it happen to the point where if, if, uh, Lexon says you guys can use the gym for the watch night service, and we get in and there's no chairs to be used, and now we gotta go somewhere and borrow a chair. So, the conversation to Chester Davis was, why can't we use the chair? I don't know, they belong to workforce, we can't use their stuff, or then why is it in the building? That's, that, that's what I had to deal with, is when it turned out good and we appreciate the city for allowing us to use the gym, we did have a good service, worked out wonderful, but we still need to get some of our own equipment for the public that's, you know, that's used in the gym.
So, your grant's gonna be, uh, applied, uh, to, uh, DuPont by the pack group or?
Well, we don't, well.
Or your nonprofit, and if it is, it belongs to you, and are you gonna donate to the city or what?
No, well, we're gonna donate it to the city, but what, what has happened with the DuPont part, we have to apply through the churches. So, there's six churches that's on the DuPont thing, so.
Sure.
So, all those six churches has to agree that this is something that's needed for the community.
Right.
And what happened, if they grant us that, that grant, and what we'll be able to do is maybe store it somewhere with the city.
Gotcha, gotcha. For use for city functions.
That's right, for city functions.
Yeah.
We, we definitely need to do that, because there's a lot of confusion about who owns the gym, and if it's a public gym, why can't we?
I'm sure it is.
And I don't have the answers for it, other than I'm, I'm gonna put it on Lexon.
He can have it. Alright, anybody else? Okay, uh, commission items, uh, Commissioner Ashbrook.
Mayor, I don't have anything, uh, just encouraging everyone to keep wearing their masks, I mean, it's, it's up to them, but I highly recommend it.
Okay.
Mr. Lowery? Don't really have anything, just wish everybody a Happy New Year.
Alright.
I, I'd like to wish everyone a Happy New Year, and I'd like to say something about the vaccine shots, that, uh, their administration, I think it's important that we get them. There's a, there's a low percentage of people that, uh, having, uh, uh, reaction to it, and I think it, it's more that it, it's helping more and it's hurting more, so I think it's really important that, um, we take, get the shot, and, you know, that's all I have.
I don't have anything in particular, other than I would share, this woman told me about these masks, I was in the Piggly Wiggly grocery store yesterday, and I noticed out of the entire group that I, I saw in the store, it was rather busy, um, only two people did not have a mask on, and I, I thought that was, uh, encouraging. And, and I think that, uh, the Piggly Wiggly has promoted the mask, worked with the city, uh, to do their part, and, uh, I think that that has a big impact on what the general public goes along with. I was, I was, you know, really let down and saddened by the fact that the mask issue became so controversial in our city. I mean, it, it actually became political on a national scheme, um, which I still have a hard time understanding that concept. I think as a community, we have the opportunity to wear a mask at any time, and, uh, I, I just wish that more people in the general public would just choose to wear a mask with the option that they have. And for the few that are adamantly opposed to it, uh, you know, that's a whole nother chapter, uh, in my mind, I'm kind of torn between, is that amount of controversy worth the mask, uh, mandate that we can enforce? I, I just don't want it to be more controversial, and then some people are like, adamantly, like, I'm not gonna wear a mask, because you told me to. Whereas if I wore it, just by going in the store and seeing everybody else had a mask on, because, you know, I told you that one story, I put it on in the soup aisle, because I was the only one that didn't have the mask on, so, I'm, I'm really torn between that, but, uh, I think we do need to continue to watch the numbers of percentage, and, and if it continues to get out of hand, I'm going to support the idea of the mask again. So, that's where I am with it, but, that's all I have.
The only thing I have is this, uh, twenty-twenty's behind us now, and if we learn from it, we're not going back there, we got twenty-one coming up, and let's just keep working hard for our city and, uh, make it, uh, better than ever. So, if nothing else, we're just standard earn. Here, don't get, get with, uh, Sarah, because you, you guys.
You know, that, that, when you find the forfeitures, does it go directly?
No, I mean, not at all, but I can ask.
Sure.
If I had those equipment, I need to.
We don't base our budget, your budget on how much money comes in.
In two weeks?
Right, you know, as far as I'm aware, it's, we're having.
We put the donations down, we have a camera, we put donations, not the fines and forfeitures.